He'll pick it up, just waiting probably for the sound to come up.
So was that you or Don?
Don.
Okay.
He knows. That's all you're gonna do is turn that up all the way.
So the rest of your stuff is pretty much all that and...
Anybody have any questions about the proposed increases? I mean, the groundwater engineering, it's fine to put it in there. If we don't put it in there, we can still do it, because you can change the weight reads.
Yeah, I mean, if it's there and you just have a contract that's already there, you can approve the contract and move forward, but I don't...
Well, it's a good idea, because we're on that path, whether it's for, whether it's for the recharge or for a new system. Hopefully, we'll know that soon.
But that contract that we're working under is done. We made the final payment.
So the part-time salaries here, that's next to...
So dues and subscriptions are going up. Are you doing something different, or is that for that report we need?
Dues and subscriptions go up, and we belong to different associations, and one of them is Rural Water, which is based on customers, and they charge you so much per customer. They all come in and do some detections like that, and it's valuable, and it's... That one's gone up recently.
Okay. Sur.
Sur, I want to go over everything I have on that list I gave you, but I would like to touch on two items. One is the part-time salaries for $24,281. That's the position for the truck operator that turns in in the summertime to clean the sewers. It was omitted from the budget initially. We talked about it at the meeting with Ed and Dawn and I met, and it just didn't get in there, so I just wanted to make sure that that gets added back in.
Where is that?
It would be 271-103-0000, and it's on that handout that I gave you that has the number, and it's on the breakdown, the printout you're looking at, that has the employees and benefits. It is on there, but it didn't make it into the...
Okay, see.
So that's the only thing he does is vacuum?
He does cleaning the sewers in the summer. He starts, in the spring, he starts, he does all of our trouble spots, which we have to do two times a year. And then after that, he'll go through and do the whole town, and then he'll go back before the lease for the year and do all the trouble spots again.
Now, about how many hours a year does he work?
I think that covers about 12,000 hours a year.
And what's that, what's he getting for pay? What's his hourly wage?
It's in there, it's like $20,000 something. It's on that breakdown machine, it's...
Public Works.
Effective, well, I'm looking at the, like, this year here, it'd be $23.53.
Next one. Yeah.
No, that's yearly, it'd be $19.65 an hour.
Now, we, we're buying that truck on a lease.
Right.
Are our employees qualified to do that work themselves?
We don't have the staff to do that, so we, it's a full-time thing that has to be done all summer. We initially wanted to try to do that ourselves, but we just don't have the staff to do it. And it's a truck that, it's a $250,000 truck, we just don't want to throw anybody on it.
Is anybody riding with him to learn how to do it, so when we do own it in the five-year time?
Yeah, we do have two people on that truck at all times, because you have to open manholes, you have to put the piping in, you gotta clean it, vacuum it, stuff. It's a two-person operation. One of our people go with him, with the operator of the truck.
Is the person you're designating to go with him the one that you're gonna have run the truck?
Well, we...
Do you switch off so they could, so they can all do cross-training, basically?
Words available.
Yeah.
We use the truck, Public Works cleans, catch basins also. They work catch basins. So we can use it on emergency situations, like if the sewer plugged or something today, we'd go out there and use it. But it has to run full-time during the summer. The thing is now, if you have a sewer backup and it overflows, you can get fined by the EPA or the state, and we have to maintain the sewers on a regular basis. And when we get our new discharge permit, which is due, it's like three years late, but when it comes, it's going to have some provisions in there that will require us to have a schedule and provide the state and EPA with our schedule when we clean the sewers, and how often we do them, and where our trouble spots are, and what we do to correct them. So it's something we have to stay on top of.
You think he doesn't run $1,200 hours and that's his pay, $10,713?
No, his pay is $24,000.
Oh, okay.
It's $19.35 an hour in U.S.
You need to add $24,000 to that line.
Okay.
So that was one of the things that was left off the budget. And then I'll just drop down to the next one, which is system maintenance, 304-71406. When Ed and Dawn and I met, we had that budgeted at $31,000, and I don't know where we got that from, it looked like we got it from back in '06 or '07, but...
Are you up page 85?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, did $24,000 be added to that line item?
Which one do you add again?
It's 406 in wastewater.
Okay, so that 31, you're adding 24 to it?
Yes. We're already, we've already spent $49,000 this year, so we, there's no way it's near enough money in there. Everything at the wastewater treatment plant is going to be 38 years old this year, and with something there, it's very expensive to fix. Everything is custom, so it's just, it's just how to do a business, just keeping things running.
Mr. Inspector, can I just ask you, on water and in sewer, all the FICA and the Medicare and health insurance are all lower than last year?
It might be an allocation thing, Jen. I really didn't try to go by last year's numbers. Tried to recalculate based on what, how the numbers are rolling up this year. I think the salary numbers might have been allocated a little bit differently last year. I don't know, that's probably an easier question, but I tried to look at what the actual costs were this year.
And go from there.
And go from there.
So those, so it looks like you're right that they were just inflated last year.
Can I go over one more thing before I answer questions about the new equipment that we're requesting this year? On the handout I gave you, there's two items. The first one is safety equipment for wastewater plant, and it's two gas detectors, and four gas units, and then there's a calibration unit, adding those pieces of equipment up, it comes out to about $4,000, and that's what I've requested. And when it's, you know, when it's time to add the bid, but right now, we have one gas meter that works off and on, and it's 10 years old, which is not adequate. And then we're dealing with a lot of the gases down wastewater plant, we really need to use. And then the other item is the new pump. The current trail amount of pump we have right now pumps 350 ounces a minute, it was supplied with the plant back in 1970, and we're still using it today. This pump that I'm proposing to repurchase is a dry fit submersible, 1,000 gallon limited pump, which you can throw the suction line into a, into a pit and just leave it running. When there's water, it'll pump, when there's no water, it won't pump, and it just continues to run. It has a vacuum system that rejects the air up so that you can pick up the prime when this pump. And also, this pump would be used at the wastewater plant, that's where we have, we have seven tanks down there that have no drains, and when we have to pump them out for maintenance, they all hold 1,000 gallons, we use this pump to pump them out for maintenance on the equipment. And then during the floods, as you know, Cedar Street Pump Station was underwater the whole time for the last two years. This past year, we did some plumbing adjustments there, so that if we had this pump, we could, well, you saw a pump there, probably, a portable that we rented, but we have quick disconnect connections there now, so that if that pump station got flooded, we could just hook this pump up, and it'd be, we'd be in operation, we wouldn't be discharging into this stream there. So those are the two pieces of equipment that we're looking to purchase this year off the budget. And I guess I'm ready to answer questions at the table.
Paul, I have a question about the FICA. If you look at the sheet I just gave you, the allocation for water and sewer, the sewer have $155,772 for full-time.
Yeah.
That's the number I use to base the FICA and the Medicare calculations on.
I see. Yep, thank you.
Okay, if that does change, then we can change the line.
This is very helpful, thank you, Don. So these are, no, Jen, these, these portable pumps are the ones, the same ones that you were asking CIP for, right?
It is.
Then you decided not to go through with it?
Right. I guess there was a question, we should go see if I can put it in the budget.
Right. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, the same.
And I might have missed it, as I was looking at this other piece, but your wastewater engineering, your actuals in '06, '07 were 63. You budgeted 50, and you're only asking 25 now? That's because, you might have just, did you just talk about it?
No, I didn't talk about it. The $25,000 is in there for incidental engineering that we might need, like, for instance, we just had a, an order from the state that we had to clean our pipes, our discharge pipes down at the wastewater plant, that were probably covered with mud and silt from the floods from the last two years. We had to do a wetlands permit, so we had to hire an engineer to do the application and everything.
So you don't see yourself as doing it so many?
So, yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
Roseanne or Mike? All right. Maybe.
Pushed back on schedule.
Good.
I'm not gonna hit on sugar and food.
You're gonna fall asleep on Tuesday.
I know.
Who's gonna tell?
Tell me what. My hair sticking straight up?
It's gonna go like this all the time.
That's why.
Another CIP meeting.
Endless.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, exactly.
Thank you very much, have a nice day.
Breathing is fine. You will not offend.
Did I turn now?
Yes, it is.
If I brought another chair, would you mind if I, Peter and Leo, join me?
No, please do.
Because being in the block, I use that quite a condition. It would help if you have any thoughts on my opinion.
If you'll ever hear. I do want to mention to you a couple of things that you're gonna ask me to make, that you'd like. First of all, years ago, I got elected as president of an ARB, because my pencil fell on the floor when I went over to pick it up, sat straight up again, I was made chairman. So be the CIP committee. But saying that, I tremendous help for Peter, Roy, John Badger, Jennifer, Leo, Diane Hardy especially, and Don Clonell, and they dropped it a few times, so I'm sure we're still on the same road. The second thing is that we met with every single department head. First of all, let me go back. We requested from every single department head a recommendation of their needs, and the sheets were sent out, they were received back, and I've gotta tell you that it looked to me like this had never been done before. Now, it may have been, but the way it was done, the sheets, in many cases, the people didn't understand what they were asked, why they didn't understand the questions, or how they were supposed to request it. It's not that we took so much out of the capital improvement program request, it's just that there are a number of things, and I think the gentleman who was just here a minute ago said is that when Jen asked him, it's the same thing they asked for in the budget meeting. They did not meet the criteria of a capital improvement item. So those are mostly the things that we took out of the, out of the budget. We had, I don't know how many sessions, besides meeting with everybody, getting their input, and then having deliberative sessions of our own, trying to meet and discuss the capital improvement program. And I think the document you had before, for you is a, is definitely a labor of love and, love and, and I commend all those who participated, because they did, all did a great, great job. And now, if you've read through it, I think Jen said that you people are gonna work on the front, the front part of this report, give some changes that were gonna be made.
Just our statement, our statement in here. We've been talking about the last meeting, so it should be fine, I think it just said draft on there, on your cover.
Okay. If you want me to go through it, I'd be glad to go through it. It's my first time around.
It might be the, maybe, this is a long document, 40 something pages.
Yep.
And we've been here for six hours.
Aye, aye.
Which is generally, actually, in past, we've been done by this point in the day for the session, so it's not that, it's just it's a long day, you already had a session this morning.
Yes, we did.
But maybe what would be good is to hit high points, or to see if we have questions. I did not have the opportunity to read the whole 40 pages yet, and what we might need to do is have another opportunity for members of the committee to come in and answer more questions later, especially with, I know you've done a lot of work to revise it, make it more easy to understand, and to maybe change some of the things that have been done in the past, and with three councils not being able to make it today, with those changes, we wanna make sure we're on the same page, so we don't later on have questions that are unable to be answered. So let's maybe hit the high points, see what questions that have come up from folks, any of the major changes you've made to the structure or to specific areas, and then everybody can have a chance to finish reading it later.
I think one thing, we started all off with, basically, when we collected all the requests, we came up to almost 1.25, 1.3 million, and we sort of came to conclusion we're gonna, it's been done in the past, we're gonna try to keep it between 900,000 and a million. So basically, we sort of prioritized stuff that was felt we needed right now, and then other stuff we put off, or stuff that was not very imminent or promising, whatever, we cut back in order to get into, and we ended up with, 972, or something like that. So we ended up taking over 200,000 out, which were a thing, nothing, not too many things that were immediate, but a piece of equipment we just bought, it was not due for replacement for 10 years or so, we might have taken off this year's money into it and added $1,000 or $2,000 into the next several years appropriations, so in order to get enough money to buy it, so I guess that. I guess the biggest thing was the, we took an awful lot out of the recreation department budget, where there was over 800,000 in it now, and talking to Jim Hilton, he was sort of saying that the gymnasium was the big item, and they still don't know whether they're ever gonna need it, depending on what happens to the school, and if they build another school with another gymnasium or something, it might not be needed. So that was one of the items, I think, that we took out, brought it down pretty fast.
Good. So that, if I'm looking at page 13 of the document, that's reflected in the $11,875 versus 120?
Yes.
Yeah. And where within the document is the breakdown of any funds that have been put into recreation?
There's a section in the back that, that should come close to what you're looking at.
I guess, yeah.
That should have the breakdown, can't find the page.
31, Brian.
31.
31?
No, that doesn't have, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, the 31 I have is cemetery, so.
30, I guess, is...
31.
It's 31 in ours.
Yeah, we must...
It's 30 in mine.
Okay. So this shows...
So 761,000 is in it now? I don't know if that, that agree with the trust fund number of those...
Yes.
The trust fund numbers, I guess, did not have this year's allocation yet installed in it? I guess that Dawn was saying that would happen, if people paid their taxes in December.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly. There's one capital reserve called Recreation Facilities. The council can spend the $760,000 tomorrow on anything related to a recreational facility.
Right.
So we don't have to spend it all, like, 80,000 on B field.
The items that are, that are under the capital reserve item are the amounts that they were going to spend this year. Now, whether they decide to spend it or not, I don't know. For instance, the ball field, the lights, et cetera, that money was going to be expended this year.
Yeah, and we'd hope to spend some of the recreation fields, for example, last year.
Well, when I say this year, I mean 2007, 2008, versus 2008, 2009.
Right, but the list of under Recreation Facilities are really just projects that are earmarked to come out of this fund. You're right, we can take them.
I just wanted to make sure that we only had, we didn't, that there wasn't a thought or consensus that there's 250 for Recreation Fields and that's it. The rest is for sprinklers, or for lights, or for the B field renovation, or for the gymnasium. And in reality, it's one fund with a broad purpose, which is fine. It's the way it should be, it shouldn't be, because things change over time, you know. And that's good to understand that, because we are still pursuing how to create new fields. And it's gonna cost a lot of money to build.
Well, that's why we changed, originally, it was going to be the, I can't think of the name of the field.
The Packers Falls.
No, it was the other one, the Hoffcroft.
Beanie Hoffcroft, oh, yeah.
And we made, we changed it just to recreational fields. That way, whichever field you people wanna change or fix, the money is available for a project other than...
No, in ours, in ours, it says, and 31 does have a line for Beanie Hoffcroft Field.
That's been taken out.
Are you sure you're not thinking of the Packers Falls?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I lied to you.
You're thinking of the Packers Falls.
I see the Beanie Hoffcroft.
I don't think you lied. It's just a mistake.
I was looking up above where we changed it to Recreation Fields.
Oh, okay, and that was the Packers Falls.
And that was the Packers.
Okay. All right, so you've substantially reduced the additional, the allocation in the next year, the current budget, budget proposal towards recreational capital reserve. I see that. And then you zeroed out the downtown redevelopment and road construction, reconstruction, and public water supply. So the road reconstruction, can you help explain that one, why that was done?
The road reconstruction is 341,500, is what we allocated for expense on that, and we didn't take it out.
And that, that was combined. Last year, they had a capital reserve portion and an expense portion, and I guess the rationale was that if it wasn't all spent, it could be carried over in the capital reserve portion, and I guess the discussion this year is that it's gonna be all in the expense portion. I don't know what's gonna happen, there is some money now in the capital reserve portion, and whether you people wanna take, spend it out of there, or whether you wanna keep that capital reserve thing open and keep money in it or whatever, is gonna be up to you, I guess. But the board decided to sort of, instead of having two, a capital reserve and a capital expense portion, it was all put into capital expense portion.
Why not, well, I mean, isn't the capital expense just the expense you're spending that year from a capital reserve? So why not?
No, not really, capital expense is also expenditures out of this year's appropriation.
My concern is that if you put it just into the budget, as just the line on, it's gonna be an easy target to cut, because it's a big number, and because some people will say the roads are in too good a shape, we can skip some this year, and you start to lose that ability to, I mean, we have, the roads in Newmarket are pretty good, there are some that need to be improved, but, you know, you go to other towns and they're horrible, and it's because they bond their roads, and they do things that cost more money. So I'd rather have, I, I don't quite understand the change, but I'd rather have the money go into the reserves, and it be $300,000 a year. And this year, Rick might say, we need to do $400,000 of projects, and the council might agree, and then next year, it's $100,000 of projects. I, my, the whole, the whole point I see in this is that it stabilizes the money going in, so you don't have this going with the tax rate.
I, I guess I'd prefer to add on that, supposedly, my understanding is once the budget is passed, the capital reserve and capital improvement amount cannot be changed. In other words, you can't say, okay, well, we lost 100,000 for snowplowing, we're gonna take 100,000 out of the capital expense portion of it. Supposedly, that's one of the four items in your budget that cannot be moved around by the council.
Correct. You can, the council or any governing body can only use monies in a capital reserve or an expendable trust fund for the purposes of which the account was established. So the council could not take X dollars from, you know, Public Works Road Paving and put it into that.
So I guess that was the rationale, but that the other, I don't know about carryovers now, what about a carryover? If you did, for some reason, expend it all, would it lapse at the end of the budget year, or would, can you put it?
Well, I'll depend. If the, if you have a project and it's, it's not completed, and you have a signed contract, and those dollars that are left over can be encumbered in order to complete the project. If, if you have a line item and nobody encumbers the dollars for that purpose, and you have to have some kind of documentation to, to secure those dollars, it lapses into the surplus.
That's the problem. So we have 341,000 this year, is what you're, you said, Rick had explained, as the paving projects. If we only do 260, because there's another May flood, and the town staff doesn't have time to get the contracts lined up or do the work, and then we put 140 into the, you know, back into the fund balance, which is a great thing, but then it's in the fund balance, and it...
No, see, what happens is, is basically, the way that the capital reserve or, or trust fund works, is that if the town says it's gonna have $341,000, we are committing $341,000 to be put into that. So if we only spend 260, the balance still is going to go into that capital reserve and available for future years' projects. So that's the way it always works.
But this year, it's $0 for road reconstruction going into the reserve.
Well, that's, that's their recommendation.
That's the difference, right, right. That's the difference. I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah.
If we're on the same page, we're just saying it from different...
Yeah, and we discussed that, as to what would happen, and supposedly, you can, and like, I guess there's still 78,000 left into the capital reserve road account from last year, and I guess, talking to Ricky, he was told that there's no money left last year, and he had to stop, and yet there was still 78,000 in the capital reserve fund that is carried over to this year now. I don't know, I guess the question, how you...
So, so what, let me just ask, I'll ask it straightforward, see if I, if I can ask it well, which is, why not put whatever, let's just say, over a 10-year period, the town's gonna spend $2.5 million on road reconstruction. Why not put 250 a year into the reserve and let the council with the Public Works Director decide that one year, it's gonna be 500 grand being spent, and one year, it's 100? What, what, I'm just trying to understand, what was the thinking of the committee that changed the input output?
That's when we discussed that, and supposedly, the board, the IP committee, decided to put it all into the expense account, rather than a portion into the capital reserve accounts like was done in the past, and a portion into the expense account.
I think, I think that, as I vaguely remember the discussion, in addition, Ed mentioned something about $200,000 a year to be put into road work, as opposed to going... As opposed to going, what is it here? 330,000 one year, then 176,000 the next, and 341,000 the next. To get some consistency, I think that's a great idea, just to put a flat amount in and, and say that's what you got to work with. I mean, I know, I know we have wish lists and everything, and I guess that's...
Well, I guess Rick feels that 200,000 is not enough to do what he feels has to be done. And I think the board basically agreed with it, that we wanted to put at least 341,000 in.
Because that's what he requested for this year.
I think he requested more than that.
No.
We cut down the...
Don stood up.
Sidewalks of 150.
See if Don can help add to the conversation.
Two, two things the committee looked at is, we looked at, we looked at the way the money has been spent for roads in the past. And typically, working with Rick this year, we sat down and Rick said, how much money do we have? And we looked at both the reserve and we looked at the expense portion of the CIP. And that's the, that's the amount that Rick contracted for to do the roads he wanted to. So basically, you're putting it in two different buckets, but you were spending it as if it was a line item expense. He was going on contracting for the entire dollar amount. And I think that's what you intended to address here, right? So, so we want, that's one piece of it. The other piece is, you, you've, over the years, you've chosen to break down capital improvements as opposed to capital expenses, and put them into one, one, one capital improvement budget. Now, the way I've always seen it is that if it's going to be a current year expense for a police cruiser or something like that, you put it in a line item budget for a department. But if it's CIP, and you've done this in the past, you've sent a check for $970,000 to the trustees. So you're basically sending all the money to the trustees. And as you get requests to spend it, you, as the town council, are asking the money to come out. My understanding of that capital improvement process is, if you don't request the entire amount, it stays with the trustees until you do. And I'm not sure why they broke it down between a CIP expense and the capital improvement plan. I, I believe it's all one and the same.
Go ahead, Jen, because I'm even more confused now.
I missed, I missed this meeting with the CIP when they did this, and I was really confused. But then I, and this is the way it was kind of explained to me so that I have to understand it a little bit, is that, I think I might have just lost it now, is that basically, what, what we're putting into the, the money that we're requesting we put into the reserve is for saving an amount towards a purchase down the road, a capital investment down the road. But paving our roads isn't really a capital investment that we're saving for, like five years down the road, we want to do this, 10 years down the road, we want to do this. This is an expense we see every year, as opposed to saving for something that will have an expense every five years or every 10 years. So since this is an expense that we have every year, why not just put it on the expense apart, expense department? So instead of saying, we want to save, you know, 20,000, put $20,000 in the reserve, knowing you're going to take $20,000 out. So what this is saying, though, is that we're going to expend, CIP is recommending that the paving only expand up to, what is it, 317 or whatever?
341,000.
341. So knowing that they're going to expend that, that's, that money's going to be in there. So the way that we've tried to help everyone think about it is that you've got this savings account, the reserve, that we're putting money in saving for, and they transfer those monies over to the expense account to be expended. So if you already know that you're going to expend this money on paving, why put it in savings and then take it right back out and put it in the checking? Is the way that it was explained. It's a matter of where you put it at. But I, I can understand what you're grappling with a little bit here, is that, once we put it in the reserves, it stays in the reserves year after year. But once we put it into this expense account...
We have to use it or it's gone.
You have to use it or it's gone. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that's something that, something that was discussed at that meeting, knowing that once you put that money in there, if we only use $200,000, that it's gone.
It goes to the, it goes to the fund balance.
It goes back to the, to the fund balance.
Unless there's an encumbrance that is created at the end of the year, which, you know, we get...
Which we've talked about before. So I would, I mean, I would recommend that we put it right into the reserve. I don't see how that would, I, I don't see how that goes against what your philosophy is as far as expending the money. We would reserve that money, put it into the reserve, and then expend as much as we need out, knowing that we could be expending more than what we've reserved, or expending less than what we've reserved.
You're talking to reserves now of the capital reserve?
Yeah.
Account, like a, okay.
Like the capital reserve.
Rather than a capital expense.
Right, and put it in there.
The example that I wanted to bring up is, the council was discussing the downtown improvement project, and we were discussing the traffic pattern that'll be happening this summer. And it was like a year and a half ago, Rick remembers this, and we were like, well, where's traffic going to go? Oh, they're going to come down Elm Street, out to Packers Falls, and we were like, oh, yeah, some of them will do that, and a bunch of them will go down Beach Street Extension. We really need to get that sidewalk and Beach Street Extension moved up. So it's kind of funny to hear that there's still money in the road reconstruction, because we didn't finish the sidewalk, you know, it's got gravel on it, because we didn't have enough money for the paving on it. But what really was happening, I think, was, was the way that the CIP was written before, there was a road and a year and a certain amount for that road. And I think that it was being treated by Melody and Al as, that's as much as you can spend on that road. And if, so, for the sidewalk for Beach Street Extension, we had, like, I don't know, I think it's $40,000 over two years. We stole money, not stole, but we took money from another road, and shifted that project a year back, moved that project this one up, and we were trying to get it done as soon as possible. So what I'm saying is that there's opportunities that come up where you might need to rejigger the priorities for roads, or shift or delay things, or spend more in a year. And having it going into the reserve first, even if every year we still end up sending this amount, gives you a little bit of flexibility on the roads. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
And that's a decision that shouldn't, that the CIP, and we talked about that a little bit, shouldn't be up to the CIP which roads get done. It's to the CIP saying, okay, we're saying we're going to save this much money every year. And then the town council and the director of public works can decide what gets done and how it gets done.
If I may.
Sure.
I think however you want to put it, maybe my confusion on the, on the whole capital expense route is one of them. Rick has an excellent plan of which roads and sensing the timing of when they have to be done and so forth. And then all of a sudden, one shows up that's got potholes and, and roller coasters in it that he's got to go right to. And we talked about the, you just alluded to the downtown extension, work that's going to be done and the need for a sidewalk on Bee Street Extension. And these are things that we didn't want to get into allocating how much he had on the paper, because it was for such and such a street. It's up to him. He's the guy that does it, and he does a good job at it. But I think what we were trying to do was give him an account to work from, and then have him make his allocations. And maybe we got a little bit off track as far as the capital reserve aspects and being able to hold money over for, for future years and maybe even draft some more. But that's, that was my understanding, and that was my feeling at this time.
This conversation's helped me a lot.
But I think you may, you know, the problem is that the road issue is a fluctuating issue. You hit the nail on the head. Being a fluctuating issue, I know the community I came from, roads were, were part of the budget, because it would change every year. And I, and I think it, we try to be as consistent as possible, but, you know, they did fluctuate. Needs came up, you could plan all you want, you know, beforehand, and then emergency comes up, and you've got to change everything you want to do. It worked out better to be part of the budget than a, part of the capital improvement, so...
I think that was a discussion that we had had too, because people thought, okay, this is a reoccurring expense. We pave roads every year, why isn't this just in the budget? But I think it's, you know, I think the reason it's not in the budget is because the expenses do change every year, and you want to be able to hold on to some of those monies in case you have a year where you have a lot of potholes or have that or so.
So is, is he just thinking, Brian, that they should all be moved to a capital reserve account instead of a capital improvement?
That's, well, my next question before I answer that was, do you plan to do $341,000 of paving in 2008, '09?
Yeah, I'd actually request some more money.
I, yeah, okay.
Well, actually, he asked 100,000 sidewalks, enough to cut to 50.
No, I asked, I think I asked the 381.
Okay, that's fine. That's a good enough answer, I just wanted to...
Yes, I intend to. There's no, do the increases, we'd be doing less, and we're kind of almost catching up.
Falling behind.
If we do any less, we're definitely, it's going to hurt us in the long run and cost us more money in the long run.
Yeah. I mean, the one thing that, if we didn't have some of the other things that the budget is going to contain in terms of expenses, I would actually be pushing to increase the total appropriation to the CIP, because, because the tar, you know, asphalt costs have gone up because of oil costs. So we, each year, it's less road can get done with the same amount of money. And if we don't start addressing that, which maybe we're doing that with the 341, that's way more than it had been on the annual basis in there for roads. But I know that means next year is probably not going to be 341, because, you know, you cut, to make that 341 available in the total amount of money being allocated to the CIP, you cut recreation by $100,000, which is not really a sustainable cut. I mean, when we start spending, when we spend 250, if we say we build recreation fields next year and spend $300,000, there's going to be a request for that to go back up, because eventually we'll need to replace fields and lights and stuff, and so it's...
I guess the big thing was the gymnasium.
Yeah.
The big thing was the gymnasium, and Jim said that, no, he does not see when, if ever, whatever, so that's really where the, the main hit came from.
Okay.
And the rest of the little ones, I guess, was soccer goals. I guess he wanted to replace all the soccer goals for 20,000, and I, I think we maybe cut it to 10 or something like that, which, so basically, it was the 100,000 for Jim was the big thing.
I think Riverwalk was cut in half too, wasn't it? They requested...
That went from 25 to 15?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's waterfront improvement.
Cemetery is 15 to 10.
Yep.
Yeah.
What, so sidewalks are just straight, again, same question?
I guess the question is, should, should there be two separate, or should it be just one?
So when I, just for me...
You'd have to develop a warrant article that combines the two. I mean, you know, you, at this point, the way that the warrant article was adopted is the way you have to deal with it. You can't suddenly change it unless you change the purpose of the warrant.
I, what I meant was, the sidewalks, there is a sidewalk reserve, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's the road reserve separate.
They're two separate ones?
Right. I don't know. I'm asking.
From what, from looking at your paperwork.
I think it's just in road construction.
Sidewalks. No, what I'm talking about in the, the...
I don't have my capital reserve papers with me.
The...
No, it wasn't. I guess you appropriated monies for sidewalks.
$50,000 to be expended to sidewalks.
That's the direct capital improvement. That's a, that's not going into the reserve and coming out. It's just being spent directly from the budget onto sidewalks.
Correct.
Which is what the roads is doing too right now.
Yes.
In this, yeah. Okay.
Don? All the money that gets approved to be put as a request into the reserve, all goes into the reserve. And then even the, when we approve some of these expenditures, doesn't that money go into the reserve and then come out as an expense regardless?
Yes.
Right, so...
I physically cut a check to the trustee.
Right.
For the whole 97.
So all of the money goes into, so every, every dollar that we ask for, for the CIP, goes into the reserve. And then the only reason we list the expenditures is because we're saying what we're going to, what we're going to most likely expend that year out of their reserves. So it doesn't really...
So if you were to do it the way that, that would make more sense to me.
Just put everything in the reserve.
Everything, you have one giant item that says, this is all the money going in, and this is the current year, expected expenditures.
The actual warrant article, both in '98 and '95, '98, was to see if the municipality will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under provision of New Hampshire RSA 35-1, which is capital reserve improvement, for the purpose of town roadway improvements and to raise and appropriate sum of $1 to place it in this fund and to designate the town council as agents to expend. And if you look under that, it had sidewalks, paving roads, rebuilding roads, whatever. So there's only one for both roads and sidewalks.
Can you read that purpose again, the last part of that warrant article?
The purpose?
Yeah, just...
For the purpose of town roadway improvements and to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 to place in this fund. So it's the chapter 35, section 1.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if attorney would say that roadways include sidewalks.
That's why, that's why when Brian said that, I was like, yeah, read that again. Because it took me, the only thing you can use it for is road improvements. Then they listed sidewalks and...
But that's just a little spreadsheet underneath that Melody created, right?
Come back to actual warrant, oh, oh, the spreadsheet, yeah. Yeah, the actual warrant article.
Just says road.
Well, I guess, are sidewalks part of the roadway?
Yeah, it's a good question. If it's in the right-of-way, it is.
Yeah, it is. It is. Most sidewalks are part of your 50-foot right-of-way.
I would say that it says roadway improvements, roadway, the travel surface that the vehicles go on, and not the sidewalks.
A roadway, I mean, I, at least where I came from, is we had this exact same structure. It runs from easement to easement on both sides of the road. That's a roadway. And it includes sidewalks, if there were sidewalks. Ours was drainage ditches in front of the houses. But the same thing, a roadway is both.
Are you, are you from Ohio?
No, I lived 19 years in Pennsylvania, though.
That's, yeah, similar.
Similar, yeah.
In the, in the...
And I'm from Massachusetts.
Road improvement consists of all improvements within the town right-of-way.
Oh, there you go.
These improvements are paving, road reconstruction, drainage, and sidewalks.
Okay.
I mean, if, you could even argue, street lighting on poles that the town installs in the right-of-way would count, but I'm not pushing that, I'm just saying.
I guess you can stretch this word whichever way you want.
I think that in doing the CIP, there are so many changes to the document and so many numbers that need to be changed around, that I think it might have gotten a little bit lost as far as the understanding of the reserve and the requests. Because even, I mean, we're saying these are our anticipated requests. These are the requests that the CIP got from department heads to expend from there, and this is their recommendation. But at any point, the town council could say, we're requesting this money come out of the CIP. So really, just, we just need to put everything into the reserve. List what yours, what your recommendations or recommendations are as a, as a CIP committee of what you think should be approved as expenditures. So that's why that roadway really should be put into the reserve, and then you listed as that, that's what we think should be expended. That's our, because really what you're saying, this is kind of the cap of what we think should be expended for this purchase this year. But these are the priorities that we think should be expended. So it's just the, and I, the thing is, it's just those, it's, it's just the road construction, I think, that you, because these other ones, even though you have them, even though we have them in capital expenditures, they're still in the reserve, because we're putting them in the reserve and taking them out as expense. The only one we left off was the, was the roads. We just need to put that back into the reserve, as well as the request, as money is...
Basically, the, the roadway maintenance type, it should be chapter 35, 1C. That is the special capital reserve accounts for maintenance and whatever, the 1C accounts rather than the, the chapter 1 accounts.
That's the, that was in the article you gave us. Okay.
But does that, because I missed that CIP meeting, I just want to make sure, is that, is that a clear understanding of what, of the CIP, are you comfortable with that? I mean, your recommendation was not to put it into the reserve. Is it, is your recommendation still not to put in the reserve? Because it has to go into the reserve to be able to come out as an expense.
Well, I guess from the explanation was given to it by Ed and whatever, is that if it was, to put all in the expense, it would still be able to carry it over, whatever, though. it would still be able to carry it over, whatever. So would, but I guess the way Brian's talking about, you wouldn't even have to encumber it if you wanted. You could just, you know, not spend it and, uh, without having to encumber it, right?
Correct.
So, I guess.
Which is what happened.
A one C or a one would give you more flexibility, by the way I can see this happening now.
Which I just think is beneficial. I mean, with the fluctuations and oil and stuff.
But it really is kind of a mute point. I mean, it has to go into the reserve to be able to come out of it as an expense. So putting this on here as an expenditure without going to the reserve, still, we're saying this is how much money we want the taxpayers to take, to approve, to take from the general fund and put in the CIP, whether it's expense or reserve. But it all goes into one account. And so it really is kind of a mute point. Does that make sense?
I agree.
True. Yeah, I think I'm right. So the water and sewer fund, you have the money figure of eleven thousand three hundred and fifty going?
Yeah, that was basically, we had, we never really spent enough time on a water source. And we ended up basically just putting in money for replacement of a vehicle. That's all that was, is the, we got different amount back and forth and really we just ran out of time and we really didn't. And I guess that.
The budget that we have has the two ninety and seventy five thousand figures, just so you know. That's what Ed is recommending for the water and sewer budgets. There's a line item in that budget that says transfer over to the CIP.
Okay, right.
And it's two ninety and seventy five, which is, I don't know, we didn't discuss it in detail, but I expect we'll keep that knowing we have significant water expenses coming up and probably in five or 10 years, significant sewer.
Well, I, I guess you.
There's ongoing groundwater.
Didn't put money into capital reserve fund other than through the CIP, I guess. And that's what you're saying, you're, you're taking right out of.
Well, well, no, see, it's always been budgeted in the water budget because it's, this is the budget that's used to calculate.
I think last year, two hundred and ninety thousand was the first time I think that you actually did it that way.
There was nothing in there last year.
Last year or the year before.
Okay, two thousand six, two thousand six, seven, we had one fifty transferred to capital reserve, two thousand seven, eight, two ninety.
Two ninety last year, okay.
So we've had, we doubled it basically last year, which I think came as a result, and I could look at it because I have a budget thing. But we had other areas that we cut, like I think we finally stopped budgeting for water plant operator.
Yeah, well, actually, your income was roughly nine hundred and ten, nine hundred and fifty, fifteen thousand was income and you were, expenditures were about seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and thirty. So what you did is you put the excess of income over expenditures into the capital reserve.
That sounds like something that we would have done.
One of the other things was that we discussed was the fact that if he's going to build a new plant, seventeen million dollars, some of the things he requested that were going to run out twenty or thirty years were moved, he was going to put in a new building. So that gets, I guess, well, right.
Yeah. Um, that makes, I understand that. It makes some sense. I also know that since, if we put it into the capital reserve, the way I look at it is, when we do build that new plant, however millions of dollars it's going to cost, we're going to have to bond. So any money we can start building in there as annual contribution is basically allowing to automatically start having that bond payment in the budget. So it's not a sudden, oh, wow, we have a ten, twenty million dollar bond and it's going to cost us five hundred thousand dollars a year. If we can get to a point where we have a down payment, basically, it's, you know, it still costs money.
It's going to be very small a bump of the seventeen million.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think at the time when we, when we met with them and toured the plan, that they had any idea of what that cost would be because we said the same.
Yeah, we had no idea.
And once they come up with some numbers, then we'll be glad to address it, you know. But that was the problem.
Right, we were waiting for that report.
Right.
Right. But still, we know it's going to cost. Those were my, those were the only two issues I had was knowing that we talk about under council was that revenue, um, from water and sewer and also those pay.
Yeah, I mean, a two million dollar bond, we're paying one seventy six a year for twenty years. So ten million dollar bond, you're going to be paying a lot of money. So seventy five thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket to start setting aside. It should probably be more. We have to look at the sewer, water and sewer rates anyway. Did anyone else have any questions for the, or did you, is there anything that you guys wanted to highlight further? I mean, those are the big things that I noticed. And Jen had mentioned it when her updates were some changes that were being discussed. Um, I wanted just to, I read the stuff about the master plan and I'm just wondering, some of the things that, if I read that section correct, which is master plan vision statement, then it goes through the different resources like public water, terrestrial, economic development. There's some things in there that I'd be surprised if they were in the master plan because the master plan's like four years old now. For example, library on page nine, or page nine, which might be your page eight or ten. It says, construction of an addition for library to provide meeting space, expansion to occur on adjacent land the town acquired for downtown parking. Well, the master plan was completed in two thousand four. We didn't buy those properties until like two thousand six. So does the master plan actually recommend the library be expanded?
The history of this is that this, this master plan vision piece came from Melody's, from, from the future, previous CIPs. And all we did was we left out the pieces that were already done. So we didn't, I mean, we didn't go through it and compare every single one against the master plan. Which is something I think that we could probably do, again, the CIP spent more time on this this year than they ever have.
Yeah, yep.
And so, and we, and the CIP did decide that we're going to, even after this budget passes, we're going to start working pretty, pretty soon thereafter, reworking this for next year. So we'll fix all of this stuff in the master plan, um, fix some of the, the forms that we give to department heads.
I was elected to the budget committee in May and right after that, probably in June, I was picked to be the member of the CIP. And Leo was picked to be alternate. I sent four emails to the town asking when the first meeting was to be held. I think we held our first meeting the end of October. And then there was time limits on when we had to have the information in by. The number of corrections and, and, and adjustments that had to be made, uh, it was really a, as I said, it was a labor of love, but the problem was that there were so many of them.
Yeah.
This thing, you know, it was like to, to some of the, to the people, it was something they had never seen before. They didn't know how to explain it. And so as a result, we had to do a lot of interpreting of what it was meant. Don was under the gun because he was preparing a budget for the, for the, for the town council. So the last few meetings were held with Diane Hardy and, and the corrections. And I, as late as yesterday, I got a copy of this and I found one of the errors hadn't been corrected. So she raced last night and made this copy up for me this morning. So maybe I've got the ones without the blank pages and it could change this, the number sheets on.
Nine, that.
But it was, it was a, you know, it was a tough thing. Also, the layout of it, we're, none of us were happy with the layout of it because of the fact that, you know, in one page, they use underlines, next page, the columns are out of balance. You know, there's some have commas in it, some don't. And, and, you know, it just, it was a lot of changes had to be made. And I commend both Don and Diane for all of their hard work also.
Definitely, it's definitely a big improvement. Um, I, I can share to Jen other areas in that section that I think need some revision to be more accurate, like the swimming pool.
What page?
On page nine, just about the swimming pool. I'm not going to go through them. I'll give them separately.
Okay.
And I know, this is just to make it more accurate. Like, we did vote on the swimming pool a couple of years ago and the voter said no. So that should probably be noted that in a certain year. And that was when someone offered us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That was.
Found slightly shocking, but.
That was one of the things that we picked up on, uh, that there was some action that wasn't, by that time, it was just.
Yeah, yeah. You guys did a lot of work in two months.
Get it done for you. So.
We're very.
Yes, I think somebody should go through and update these. And had we had more time, we would have been glad.
The one thing that was nice is to see how much we've done. I hope that you all recognize that too by reading through and how many times I saw done, done on pretty significant things. So it's a good, it's a good thing that the plan we had in place was providing the resources to do stuff and we were doing it. And it was pretty good, although the planet document itself was a little hard to understand, for sure.
I don't want to blame global warming on the people that were in charge last year. They're no longer here. But I do think that, uh, an awful lot was, was assumed. Uh, Jen, you were on the committee and I was an alternate last year. And an awful lot was assumed. It just, oh, this is the way we do it. And, and I don't think there was as much questioning or as much innovative thought as one of this year's committee. And I think that I learned a lot, particularly the meetings at the, at the various departments, with the department heads and so forth, that shed a great deal of light on the process for me. But I'm still way behind the curve as far as where it should be. Uh, but I think that this, as you pointed out, was a good start. And if there is the, the initiative and, and time to do the thing the way we envisioned it being done, and that is to redo the forms so that when they go out to the department heads, there'll be some sort of a meeting, and I know, we talked about that, uh, to encourage them to, to, uh, understand the process themselves first before they make these things out and do so in a way that we can sit quickly or more quickly with the things that they, they feed back to us and get it in order that you can, uh, deal with. But this, this was what, you know, what we, the change was, was terrific from last year to this. And it's a step in the right direction. It isn't done yet.
Yeah, I could guess another thing to come up in procedure whatever is, uh, Don, I get brought it up more than, he has questions about whether he should be voting on these things. And Diane is sort of the same way. I mean, they see like their staff members helping and they don't know if they feel comfortable on whether they should be voting on this. And you know, you were the one that was most concerned about, oh, yeah, you're a voting member. Well, I don't know, I should be voting on this, no. And I guess whether that might be addressed if you people wanted to change. I mean, I, I had no problem with voting and no one else did except Don himself. And Diane was sort of questioning whether they ought to be voting members or not.
I think maybe we could add that to our list of discussion moments, go over kind of committees' responsibilities and, you know, because I think there are a lot, there have been a lot of questions this year. But as we continue to add more and more committees, it seems like more and more responsibility is being, is, is being used. And we need to kind of hone that in a little bit. So every committee knows, these are the rules and procedures of running your meeting. This is who can vote. This is the authority that you have in your committee.
I think that's one of the things we did is we set up rules of procedure and how it should go up. And there was never any in the past. And by setting up rules of procedure, we basically know what responsibilities everyone had and how it would be handled.
And usually too, most committees, you have to be, most of them that I'm aware of, you have to be a resident of the town. So.
Staff people though.
Yeah, staff people.
One of the things we're going to do, and we mentioned this with the budget, but, uh, we talked about this as a CIP committee. We're going to put together a manual for this year. Fill in forms because what we found out was the department heads had never been requested to fill out the forms before. Even though they existed, they weren't filled out by the department. So a lot of them weren't, didn't know how to fill them out.
Right.
I don't think any of us realized that until we requested the forms to be filled out. But we'll, we'll put together examples and a detailed brochure, or book, handbook. That seemed what I like to do. Just so the department can look at it and put together the forms based on a manual to go by. And that was, that was missing with the budget too.
Brian. Something that you mentioned earlier when we were going through some of the puts and takes, I guess, is looking under recreational facilities.
What page?
Uh, well, right now, I'm on page thirteen, just the, the master sheet. You had mentioned that there was like a hundred and ten thousand dollar decrease. And so I, I went to page thirty one, which actually lists the, um, improvement programming. And I guess I'm a little puzzled because I'm taking a look and I'm seeing a lot of zeros across the board. I'm seeing, um, for example, tennis courts, you know, which had a replacement cost of fifty one, which was tentative for eleven and twelve, but there's nothing allotted there. I see the same thing with the Beanie Hellcroft Field, which for, uh, year ten and eleven, thirty thousand dollars is nothing there. But more so, it's like B field, you know, capital reserve, eighty thousand dollars. Okay? I mean, are, are we not planning for future repairs on, on, on these fields? Or are we doing, are we saying that the tennis courts are not going to be done? Or the gymnasium's not going to be done even though there's, you know, X amount of dollars for a balance in there? Or we're not going to allow any work to be done on the Beanie Hellcroft Field? But yet, in two thousand and twelve and thirteen, and thirteen and fourteen, we're going to pay money for a pool that we already voted down. Or we're going to apply money for a pool that we already voted down. I'm having a hard time to understand this particular page because I'm going through everything else and everything else looks like, okay, you know, they've got what they wanted, um, or to some extent, there's money's being set aside for future improvements or for regular maintenance as the case may be, which may not be what the CIP is all about. But I guess I'm concerned that, you know, you're going from roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, to a valuable part of the town, as we just heard in, in our last, um, discussion. And we're cutting them down to like, uh, twelve thousand dollars in, in capital improvements on, on a yearly basis.
Mike, I, I don't think that's, I, there's seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's going to be sent, spent this year. And that's most of the category.
Well, no, but that's debatable. That is debatable because, for example.
That's available to be expended.
Right, because I see lights for B field, lights for A field, three hundred thousand dollars. I'll, I'll be surprised if there's lights on those fields. I will be surprised.
Whether you spend them or not is, is, is not our business.
No, but I'm just saying, you know, how do we maintain these, these fields afterwards?
I, I guess you're right, Mike, is that we did not carry these out like we did on all the other departments.
Like, and what happens is you end up with fields that, that look like the fields we have now.
And you're right, we did not, and we should have put numbers, probably not, uh, under the same heading, but we should have had, um, replacement numbers and buildup numbers. And this is one of the items that we never really got to, to, to do that. So it's, basically, we ran out of time and we, uh, and I agree with you, they should, probably the recreation facility, uh, heading of the breakdown should be different. But I agree that there should be money periodically put in, just like we do for vehicle replacement or all this other stuff.
Field replacement, instead of doing it by each field.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think that part of what we need to do is, and it's sort of a goal that I have in, in working with Rick and working with, with John, that we begin to start looking at that entire picture across the board, where's, we're saying, okay, here's all the things we need to accomplish and, and start setting out a program that does that. Because I think that, you know, the, the work at the fields needs to be coordinated with, with, with Rick and John. Because those two people are going to be intimately involved with that and then are going to be responsible for down the line creating plan of actions as to how we maintain those fields so that they're in good shape all the time. So I think that, you know, as Don pointed out, putting together that manual, starting it early, as Rick has talked about, the, the whole process, we start getting people thinking long term. And, um, as opposed to what we've seen is that people have participated this much of the process, which is all of this. And, and now we're getting, we want them to be involved from, from the beginning to the end and thinking about what's going to be done, how much is it going to cost and how do we go about funding it effectively? I think we have a lot of work in the next, in the next year. So we're sitting here next year, we're at a different, we're at a different place and we're looking at it and we all have a better understanding as to where, how we got here and why we're at this point.
This was the same meeting that I missed and I got a concern with all these heroes of the recreation. And when I talked to Diane about it, because I'm of the same philosophy, the whole purpose of the CIP is to save small amounts of money so we're not hit by big expenses. Um, and I, and the rationale that I was, was taught from the meeting was that if you look at these things, these things are already funded. And, and, and this CIP is really not for the maintenance necessarily, like the day to day maintenance.
Right.
Is not, is not supposed to be in the CIP. Um, so these things were already funded, so they didn't see the need to continue to add for those. And I don't think there was any recommendation from the, from Jim Hilton to fund these either. So we didn't get a request to, to put money away for those areas either. Um, he did, I, I was at the same meeting Leo was at and I, and I think he really supported putting the money away for the gymnasium. But he did say, he's not sure when it needs to be online, but we definitely are prepared for it. And the original building was built in mind to say that this would be there. And even if the school got another gymnasium, then we could still utilize the one at the rec department. at the rec department. Was, was my understanding from that.
And he did say the, the roof.
The roof.
The roof. And that wasn't in here. But he feels, and he showed us the roofs of the Recreation Center and something's gotta be done. And I guess.
Doesn't that fall on the building and, under, under a different category?
For that, right. That's something different. But I, but then what I had gathered from is that there was a real push from the CIP to keep it under, committed to keep it under a million dollars at, at that one meeting. That was the big push when they were kind of going through it. And what they've done, as you can see, they, the ladder truck, they funded an extra twenty-five thousand dollars year that we didn't fund last year. Municipal, they went up fifteen thousand dollars for the facilities, five thousand up for the library because they want to put an extension on. Telecommunications went up twenty-five thousand dollars. And then we had this big bridge repair. It was new for us.
We also have roof replacement in the buildings and improvements.
Right. That's, that had gone up, I think.
And I don't know, you know, that's whatever roof you folks want to do.
Right. But what I'm saying, and I think what they did, Mike, is they said, okay, we've got all these areas, the bridges, that's another forty thousand dollars that wasn't in the CIP before. We're gonna have to cut it from somewhere. And they cut it from rec, knowing that these had all been funded in the beginning. And that the gymnasium, that was the hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be saved, isn't gonna be happening right away. But I agree with you. I'm not, I'm not necessarily supportive of that decision not to keep putting money away because I think it is something that we need to have.
But is it an expense or, or a capital project?
Or, or reserve.
I don't know the answer to the question. But we didn't.
Not this year, it's not an expense.
We didn't touch any, no, no, no. I'm just saying. We didn't touch any of this out here. This is how it was presented to us originally. I think these monies were in there and that's all it was requested. We, uh, requested. So we said, fine, if you requested it, then that job, whatever it's gonna be, it's gonna be done. Nobody asked us for money to be put aside to, to mow the lawns or something like that, which I don't think is a cap reserve project anyways. Are we sorting the fields? That's argumentative what it's supposed to be. This money was supposed to be spent two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Hasn't been expended yet. So whatever you folks are gonna decide to do, it's available for you to do it. If you don't use all of it, then your money is there to start. And then from then on, if you're going to do a capital project, then by all means, tell the cap approval program what you want to do and we'll be gladly put it in. But when you're not given the information and with the time constraints that we're operating, you know, we didn't ask a lot of questions that perhaps we should have asked. You're no question about it. But we did keep in the bleacher request and the bus replacement. Okay. But I guess, once again, my biggest concern is, you know, we're saying that year of replacement for a lot of these things on this particular page, tennis courts, say, say we do the tennis courts or there may be tennis courts that we're using, I'm not even sure at this point. But year of replacement is scheduled for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve at fifty-one thousand dollars. There's no capital reserve for that fund. And you go all the way up to two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, and there's no funds allotted for that purpose.
It's a priority decision.
He had told us that he didn't know where he would put the tennis courts. And I think that's why we agreed not to take it out.
He basically said, if we have tennis courts, we don't know where they'll be.
Eliminated all of that. There's nothing across. That's scheduled for two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. I beg with the problems, but there's a problem in regards to the Beanie Hellcroft field. And I'm not sure what it is.
I think it's more of an issue that they, we didn't, we didn't get that far because a lot, you see, a lot of those were like that. And I, and I looked at them and said, you know what, these should really be amortized over the whole, the years. These costs should be spread out over the years. So you say, okay, we've got five years to the time that this needs to be replaced. Divide that replacement cost by five years. That's what the CIP is for. So I, I agree with you, Mike, here. And I think the only thing that, that these were the requests from the, from the department, from Jim, he didn't make any requests because these top ones, they're all done. They're paid for, the money's there when we're ready to do them. The money's there for them. Up until two thousand and fourteen, which is the pool. And although it says two twenty-five, two twenty-five, and thirteen and fourteen, that's just old from the last CIP. This isn't act, that's not actually a recommendation from us. And it should be zero. Because we didn't discuss when we were gonna put money in for that. The tennis courts, Jim Hilton said he's not ready to, he doesn't think we need to start funding for that. The gymnasium, I, I, as a town council, I'm gonna recommend that we put in the money back into saving into this area. But also remember, Mike, that these items that you see over here, there were no warrant articles necessarily about, you know, the warrant articles for this recreation facility. Some of them are there. It got voted down. What did you say? When did it get voted down for the?
Three years ago, I think.
For the tennis courts or the pool?
Pool.
For the pool. You know, so that might be something that comes out. These are from, these are ideas from the master plan that have been put into here. Does that help?
It, yeah.
It doesn't seem like it.
I, no, I, I guess, you know, I, I take a look at it as, you know, everybody should share a burden. And it seems to me like to, to, to hit the number that we're looking for, we took the largest chunk out of one of the smaller CIPs, I guess. I mean, just see if I'm making a fair statement.
No, I think you're right. I mean, you have a one point eight six million dollar total expenses, but you're not allocating enough money right now over a six-year period to fund it.
And that's something we can do on our level. Like I said, that's what I'm gonna support is more money going into the CIP for the rec department. But that's, but again, the, this consensus of the CIP group was to keep that dollar amount at the total CIP. And you're absolutely right, they cut it from recreation.
And the other part would be, we can ask Jim and Rick to get real estimates for lights for A and B field and see what they come in at. And it might be one seventy-five for both and, and we have more money.
We see lights there, but that's my own opinion. I'll be surprised.
Going back to where they were, not putting lights up?
There's not a large movement for lights on those fields.
And I think too, with the, the problems with the mosquitoes and the triple E and all that, you're gonna see fewer people wanting to come out to play at night.
I don't know how many people will frisbee on the ground.
You're in your frisbee.
I agree with you on that. But you know more people than I do. But a lot of people were very disappointed that they, the lights were taken out.
Yeah.
Very disappointed.
But anyway, I'm just saying, then if, we gotta make a decision. Either we're doing them or not. And if we're not doing them, then we reallocate that money to new fields or refurbishing the fields and get it, the work done.
I think you'd get a good representation. You should put a warrant article in and say, you want appropriate three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand or whatever for lights on the recreation field. And I think rather than us saying yes or no, I think you would get a, a more representation of what the town, whether they really think it's worth two or three hundred thousand dollars.
As opposed to letting seven people decide it.
I, well, that's our job. So. Yeah. And I'd like to wrap this up so we can get to the rest of it.
Just for, for Mike's benefit, what, what we tried to do is, if you look at, on page twenty-seven, if you compare it to last year's, looking at like heating and replacement, they broke it down by fifty dollars by building. You know, or they allocated that annual appropriation by individual buildings. Wherever we could, we consolidated to give Rick the flexibility to do, to do that. We did those type of things through, through this whole thing. You've got the money in the rec department. I think the money's in there for rec improvement, not necessarily by those individual projects, as we said before. So I think you could, based on the way that the warrant article was written for.
It's available.
Change, allocate the money that's already been approved for expenses and change them if you chose to do that. But we, we found ourselves in a situation because of a time constraint, where we had a look at the next fiscal year primarily. So we did some of the looking past that. But coming up to the point that we should, I'm lost. What Jen was saying, we need to put more work into this.
No, because it doesn't matter. We don't have to save one of those on. And this is for you.
It's currently available.
There was a meeting you missed.
That's how I just.
One thing too, that the, 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 instead of saying the roof, they just put a certain dollar amount towards roofs. And then we decide, hey, we're gonna do the P D this year. We don't specifically say each building, we just, it's just called roofs, but anyhow. Which is a pretty good idea of the thoughts of the committee and Dawn. Because you know, this roof that lasted about thirty years, but we're saying we need to do it and we don't. But we need to do the P D.
It probably all made it should be some, similar to that painting or whatever. Should be all town buildings, you know? And if you wanna make it a improvement.
It's almost like you need to start like an August meeting and looking at CIP things. There's not enough, there's so much to look at, you know, time. You start in October.
How much would it cost, an estimate, to do the rec department roof? Paul, talk.
I think it was fifteen. If you look in the previous year, oh seven, oh eight, there's already, money's been put away for that.
But if we had to do that job next week, how much would that cost? They said the roof's in bad shape. Size of that building. Exactly.
Someone can give you that price tomorrow. It's five more thousand dollars next month.
Do we even have enough now that's currently available to do that? We've got forty.
We have forty-six thousand.
If you look at, I've been pricing houses, they're up to six, seven, eight thousand dollars a regular house. I think they're talking twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a piece with the bitching and what they have to do on edging and whatever now. You're talking twenty-five, because that's a big roof. We looked at it and it is a big roof. And I, I would say twenty-five, thirty thou, well, the roof here, seventy thousand dollars for the, for the church. That's what they spent on the church here. So.
And what's the senior activity center for sixty thousand?
That's the sunrise sunset thing. What's the money for? I don't know.
Yeah. We, we just told it was twenty-one thousand dollars.
That's operating.
No, this is a senior activity center building.
Oh, okay. Okay, buildings, okay.
For repairs and, not repairs, but.
It's replacement, to replace it.
Yeah, there's, there's still some things that are left at the facility that need to be accomplished. There's flooring that need to be accomplished, there's heating that need to be installed. So there's, there's still some items that are necessary that if the center is completely functional, need to be undertaken and completed.
Okay. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
And for all the work you did before you got here. All right, next is.
I picked up my paclets on the way out.
There's donuts upstairs.
Next one is legal. My brain is, it feels like it's ten o'clock.
I'm zoning.
My brain is locked. No, it just means the brain's on turn-off mode. So. Legal, conservation, economic development. So it's the first, second red tab. Yeah, this is the last set of bands. They're short.
Is that coffee upstairs still hot?
Sarah's in the room. Get your page. I go to the conference like, that's funny.
I need some coffee. Everything still open up here?
Uh, yes. If not, it's, it's, was he?
What's that, the finance?
Yeah. You'll bring everything.
Was he there for?
He lay low.
So he works.
All day long.
Whenever he can.
Yeah, every second he can.
No. He said something. He says, no, I can't say.
All right. So legal, we have a budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars higher than last year. Twenty-five fifty higher.
Thank you.
You're on page sixteen.
Twenty-five, twenty-two fifty. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven fifty, sorry.
And our expenses are.
It says level funding, but it's not level funding.
Yeah.
But it's close enough. I think given the lawsuit we have and the negotiations on property and the other forensic audit, that we should keep that number.
Is the lawsuit the?
The taekwondo, the molestation.
So it's not another one?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Just checking.
Okay. So next one, conservation, which is. Conservation, level funding themselves. Any questions? Economic development.
So are you saying all planning is, and zoning is level funding?
No, planning and zoning is when Diane comes in. So we're not.
So which one did you go to, conservation? Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
In the, in the economic development, if you notice in the three, ten account, I'm suggesting that with the four thousand dollars that we have in there, with the, the Main Street being the focus this year, I'd like to work with the, with the Main Street organization, participate with them in letting people know that the downtown is still open for business.
Okay.
If we're gonna be, if there's gonna be something in the newspaper, we contribute something toward that. And working together, people still know that they can come into town and, and park and, and buy.
And you can do that with the current budget too. Because we haven't spent the four thousand as well.
And that's, and that's part of what I, I'm hoping to do in, in the beginning part when we start and to continue to add into, into the next phase.
Did you say the Main Street Corporation is gonna start getting involved in that?
No, I, I meant that the.
New market vis, oh, because I was excited that the Main Street.
Hold, yeah, hold down that answer. Any more excitement?
Turn it down.
Insurance. This is the property liability and deductibles. And that is a nine percent increase, which is what the maximum they can do in the contract.
Yes.
That we authorized a couple of weeks ago. And the deductibles stay the same. That seems like we can't have a choice there. So. Debt service.
Debt service.
Can't do much there either. Although this, the note, this is the discussion.
Just going down just a little bit.
Yeah, it goes, the interest goes down every year by like four or five thousand. But the second bond there isn't really a bond. It's the payment we're paying back to this fund balance to cover the money we use from the fund balance to pay for the upfront cost of the fire station, fire public works. And how many, that makes ten years left basically, unless we change this allocation in the future. Which we might be able to do when the downtown TIFT ends and we start getting more revenues. Emergency services. This is, has to do, I believe, with, there's, this is after fire rescue, I think.
Yeah, emergency management director.
Yeah. This is Candace, right?
Yeah.
Candace's work on the flood and all that stuff. So she's still doing it for five hundred bucks? Wow, that's nice.
It's not coming along actually, that emergency management.
Um, you know, it's something I haven't jumped into. So I haven't, I can't, I can't tell you where it's at.
We've had one meeting, I'm on the, wait, we've had one meeting in the last year that had been here.
It seemed like we were doing a lot of meetings on that for a while, like Lamprey Hilton are getting ready for the town in case something happened.
Yeah, that was for the, in case we had the heart to breaking out and everything.
Right, right, right.
That's it.
Really?
Do we need to motion to adjourn or are we just?
I think we can just adjourn at three fifteen. And our next session's Wednesday night.
Wednesday night?
Are we off here?
No, probably not yet.
Seven to like twelve thirty?
We have police, library, planning zone, and code enforcement, town clerk, and grants.
Is there anything else you need for the next meeting, next?
I don't know. I don't think so.